Live in infamy and we are all present minus Commissioner Daphne West. So let's begin with future agenda items. Does anyone have something to put on the rocket for future meeting? We now move into our discussion. We have a few things this evening, I think about five. So let's start with the downtown parking plan implementation. We've adopted the parking plan and now we're scheduled to talk about how we will put it in practice. So who's in this? Scott? Looks like you have several things tonight.
I do. Did you mean Mayor and Commissioners? So yes, Mayor, as you already noted, and as you know Commissioners, you've recently, well, not super recent, but on August 4th actually, adopted our downtown parking plan. And you did that by resolution and since that time we've been, Ms. Bush, I want to just announce or reintroduce to you Nancy Bush, of course, is our code enforcement and parking manager and.
You know, she looked half way lighter. Weren't you at Liberty Plaza on Saturday?
Oh, no.
I was looking a lot like you.
Looked a lot older. Don't let her insult you. That's been a red and white outfit. That's right.
Yes, she does many things for the city. So actually, yeah, credit to Nancy. She does a lot of work on that, helping to bring that event together. Does a great job with that. So Nancy's also here to kind of help with any questions that might come up. At any rate, Nancy and I have been working since the time that we've adopted the plan in preparing what we would like to move forward on as kind of our first phase of action items. The items that we've identified that we believe we can move, we can move on, that need to be moved on for a number of reasons or need to be moved forward on. And there also that are ones that are relatively easy to get some, something going. That's one of the things that we've heard is, you know, we'd like to see some process or some progress on this. And so with that, what I've, what I've attached to your report is the, a couple of attachments. The first one is just titled Phase One Downtown Parking Study Implementation. And these are the 12 items that we've identified that we are planning to move forward on as soon after January 1st as possible. So these are kind of the immediate action items and some of these will take a little bit more time than others, but we'll be moving forward on those. And those 12 items, I'm just going to quickly walk through those. We are going to immediately relocate 20 permit spaces from the core. This actually is kind of being expedited by the, by the bridge closure because these are those parking spaces underneath the bridge that are going to be used as a staging area by the contractor. So that actually kind of helps us move this part of it forward. Eliminate eight hour parking in the downtown core. This is one of the major objectives of the plan. And we're going to relocate the longer term parking and get to the north end. Again, this was another major objective is one of the main themes was to take the, the long-term parking as much as possible out of downtown, or I should say out of the core and move it to the north end of our, of our downtown or even up to the bluff here. Change existing three two-hour stalls to make them pay stalls. We're going to be installing some signage, give people some information as to where to park if people are coming in and to do something, you know. The idea is, of course, in the core is to promote businesses. You want to turn the parking over. That's why you go with the shorter term, the two hours. If you're looking for something longer term because you're there for other reasons, we'll try to provide signage that helps people understand where they can go and find that, that, that longer term parking. So it's an education process. Changing eight-hour meters to permits on Sixth and Railroad. Number six, the increased hourly meter fees. The core, we're going from 50 cents to a dollar an hour. And then we'll be adding some, some meter fees that don't exist right now at 50 cents an hour in the north end and then eventually to the bluff. The, and then number seven is.
Before we move this, my, how are you going to inform the public about that ahead of time so they can make some decisions if they want to?
Do we, do we have any meters on the bluff? We do not.
Currently the bluff has, see, we currently the bluff has all on-street.
Yes.
If you want to come up, I don't think you can get it on tape very easily. So if you come up here. It's a formal study, but we're informal.
Okay. Currently the bluff has all on-street, two-hour parking and it is free. The bluff is greatly impacted, as you know, by the downtown core not having enough places to park. So naturally, people will choose with the increase at the meter to probably park up top. And additionally, it should pay for the enforcement for up top and to help expand the program.
My question is, how do we let people know ahead of time that the rates are going to change and if they can go to the cheaper parts down the park if they're going to walk, take the elevator or whatever? How are they going to know ahead of time?
We're going to continue to work with the groups. We can clearly identify our permit holders, the jurors, the, the court employees. And then also that's where some of the media comes in and some of the handouts and Lloyd Purdy's helped as the Main Street Manager and help getting that word out to the businesses.
Give me a number of factors that you can actually, the city can actually produce and put into the businesses so people can pick those things up.
Well, yes, we've had some discussion items, discussions about that. Those are, North End and Block are two things that, well, also with the core, those changes aren't going to happen overnight. We'll have an opportunity to kind of plan for those. They're things that take a resolution action. We'll see them come back before you and we'll have a little bit more time to lead up to that.
Yeah. So number seven, kind of tailing off of that is the, the increase in our permit pricing. Again, these are based on the recommendation data report. You can see what those are. What we're going to be recommending is, is some ranges that give us some flexibility to find the right pricing point. Because on, on one hand, we want to, we want to price ourselves competitively. On another hand, we don't, we don't want to discourage people from using the private parking lots. We don't want to, we don't want to drive people out of those because we underpriced too much. So as Nancy just said, and that was a comment that I was going to make to you as well, is number six and seven will be brought back to you as a separate action item. The, the majority of these items on this, on this list are items that we're just going to move forward on pending any other concerns or direction by the commission. But six and seven specifically will take some, some further commission action that we'll be bringing back to you as Nancy said in a, I think in just a resolution format to amend our current pricing.
So are all the new meters sold?
Not the.
We have not purchased any new meters. The idea is once we've increased our fees and we've generated some revenue, we certainly are going to move into the solar, hopefully solar pay stations is what we would like to do.
Okay. But that will be over time.
That'll be over time. Yeah, we'll lead up to it.
Actually, you asked the question, Mayor, that jumps ahead to number 12 there. So while we're on that topic, I'll just kind of jump in.
I'm still on six and seven.
I just wanted to make sure that we for sure answer that question. What we're doing is the implementation of the, of the pay stations is we're going to, we're looking at a pilot program. Where we can do maybe a couple of those in the core area and we'll try those and then we'll kind of work towards hopefully going towards the majority of our, our payment being done through those pay stations. And those, those will be solar and.
So it's the, like Portland asking me, you go to the middle of the block.
Right. And you can use, you can use your debit or your credit card instead of having to dig for coins or look for coins or whatever.
Mayor, if I might, I think Portland has been through a number of iterations of those machines and the, any success of one seems to have gotten a little bit more user friendly. So we're, we are actually, I think, going to take advantage of some of their experiences and make sure that one we get is the latest, greatest, most customer friendly one we can get.
Yeah, they're like, they're like, really have slick.
My concern is this. The closure of the bridge is going to inhibit some people from coming. And those that come, if you see the closure of the bridge and they implement this during that period, are we hurting ourselves? We got two things way out at the same time.
Are you talking about hurting ourselves in terms of maybe driving people away?
Going to the businesses, right?
Well. I know Lloyd is here too. So, you know, certainly if Lloyd has any other thoughts on that, he can say so. But I, I think, you know, the, the thing is this. We worked on this parking plan, you know, for about a year and a half or whatever it was. We believe, based on all the recommendations and all the research and data that we gathered, that we are pretty significantly underpriced to begin with. And it's, it's a supply and demand issue. And again, the incentive in the, in the, in the core area on the short-term parking is to turn people over as, you know, within a certain amount of time. I don't believe that we are going to be putting people in a position of driving them out of the core. I think Lloyd probably could speak more to the downtown business owners and those concerns, but we've, we've had some conversations. A lot of the input came from processes that included the downtown businesses and, and nothing that I've heard to this point has led me to believe that, that there's a concern over going forward on this. That's not a, you know, of course, there aren't any guarantees until you actually do something, but that's, that's what we believe based on all the information.
I think one of the important pieces to remember is that by increasing the prices and increasing the permit prices, you are removing the employees by basically pricing them out of the meter and you're feeding, freeing up those meter spaces for those businesses that are going to be ever more dependent upon it with the bridge closure.
Lloyd, do you have anything to add? I guess I, I wonder if you've had some of the same concerns. Is this the right time or should this be phased? I mean, I think, I think we're seriously underpriced, but I was wondering about, about phasing it as well. But I mean, a dollar, a dollar per hour is certainly less than a lot of cities, except for Silverton where it's a penny.
Some of our old parking meters.
Yeah, the old parking meters, a penny in their little Main Street section. There is coin.
Well, that's.
We have talked about this a long time. I, I don't think that a dollar an hour price is out of the market. Especially if there are alternatives, people want to walk a little farther. They can find different.
I was just, the indication was we're not going to give meters on the bluff and so forth at that time. Of course, they can't go in the bluff and they can't go to the north end if those get raised to dog. Was the price side of the problem was the time of implementation associated with the closure of the.
So that's sort of a similar thing.
Well, I guess my, you know, my, my response to that would be this is, that's certainly up to the commission. That is not a recommendation, but if you, this is the time to tell us if you don't support the price increases right now. Because we will be bringing back for, for a formalized action at a regular commission meeting. The, the increases have to be approved by you. So if you're not comfortable with that, it would be good to know that. You know, this might be something we want to have a little further discussion on.
When do you think you're getting meters? I think that's a, a different question. When do you think you're getting new meters?
Well, as soon as we generate enough revenue to buy some.
So that's, that's going to be generated off of this.
This is going to be generating the money to hopefully put it in our budget for July 1st to be purchasing some. We would like to enter into the pilot project to hopefully generate a little bit of revenue, kind of training people to some long-term parking on the bluff. So they don't only have one option of parking at 13th if you have a meter at six. Currently, I, I did a count from 7:30 until nine o'clock in the morning, excuse me, until nine in the morning. And I, I think it was, like 90 some people went down in the elevator. Not one person went up. So they're parking up on the bluff anyway, all day and just moving their cars. So let's give them a price to park and let's charge them for it at a cheaper rate and generate some revenue to manage the system that we, that needs to be managed.
I think that probably my peers, my concerns would be laid, we're just to be accompanied with how we're spending the parking money, why we're raising it. I mean, if we're raising it just because we're cheap, cheaper than other cities, that's not really the reason for these fees. If we have a legitimate purpose for the raise and it's going into some, so I think that's really important when you bring it back, that, that's a very clear outcome.
Currently, everything in the north end is free. So if you change anything in the core, it's going to go to the north end. It's going to create the same problem. There should be a fee for managing the north end as well. So I think it's balanced anyways.
Yeah, all the, all the funding or all the revenue that we generate from the parking program gets reinvested into the parking program. So whether that's improved services by, you know, doing the, the better style of meter goes back into the management of the program and the enforcement of the program and then also into things like education and signage and those kinds of things. So it, it goes back into its own, its own use.
And then one of the things we kind of mentioned before, and you mentioned the elevator. I, you know, when we talked about how to fund partially in the extra hours to elevator, I think that'll come into play too. I mean, if people are parking more up on the top of the hill, then maybe some of that parking money would go back into helping increase the hours to elevator, stuff like that.
Okay, move on.
Yeah, just the, I think there are two or three other items on the list or just to kind of wrap that up that we have. There are also some increased parking fines and proposed increase in minimum bail schedule. That's in a separate sheet. And those are actually presented to our municipal judge. And she approves those, not the commission, but we believe that you need to understand what we're doing and obviously support that before we take that to, to our judge. So again, the, the justification being a few things here. One is clearly in our recommendation that, that these, these fine amounts are low. And the, the purpose of the fine more than generating revenue is, is for compliance. If you're able to get a, get a ticket and that ticket kind of justifies your time for parking, then why do you even worry about finding a parking solution? So these are based on those types of, those types of recommendations that came out of our report and that's where the increases come from. And then the other thing is, then we heard a lot of is that if you, if you can, you can get more than one citation, however, they continue to be the same amount. So again, where's your, where's your motivation to, to move your vehicle if it's just going to be a $10 ticket every, every two or three hours? And the justification or the recommendation there being that we, we, we've moved to a progressive fine increments of $10. If you have specific questions on what that means or how that works, Nancy can probably explain that better than I can. But it, it's an, again, it's, these are incentives to not, not violate the parking rules and laws.
I just wanted to make a note about the progressive citation. I watched a, it may have been a work session and Commissioner West made a comment about how we track the people who have multiple citations in a month. And that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about the users in one day. The people who play the game and simply move to the next block and they're really not solving the problem. And it's kind of the cost of doing business for them. But the progressive citation really helps guide them to the commit.
Any more questions, any about minimum bill? All right, thank you, Mayor.
Then again, just a couple of other things. The expansion of the north end permit zone, we're just creating some, some new permit, permitting zones that don't exist right now. And then we've already talked about the, the pay station pilot project. So those are the, those are what we're calling our, our phase one implementation. And again, the purpose tonight is to bring this to you and to make you aware that based on the plan that you adopted, these are the items that we feel that we can move forward on. And again, if, if there are any concerns or redirection of that, we'd certainly like to know that because these are, these are what we plan to move forward on.
Okay, I think probably some, oh, go ahead, Scott.
I brought this in before. Really, of course, increasing the number two-hour parking stalls downtown. On the bluff, I suggested, I think earlier, to have a slightly longer time period, two and a half or three hours for the fact that people, a lot of those people are going to be taking some pedestrian transit time to get to their locations. I don't know if you're building that in at this point or you're considering.
Actually, we are looking at Sixth street between High and Center is currently no commercial frontage on either side. They're just surrounded by private lots. It would be no impact for long-term parking. We are considering that for long-term pay station area as well. Possibly with the first two hours being free until we generate enough money to really kind of charge for anything else shorter on the bluff. So we are considering that and it's something that we're continuing to get everybody's input on.
Okay. I think the other thing is, I guess for Commissioners to be aware of is that if you have, the only, the only things that are coming back for approval will be number six and seven. If we can increase it, the rest of it, unless there are, are terms will be implemented. So nice the night and.
Yes.
Okay. Guess you got, you have a mandate to go forward.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's move on down to the next item of discussion, business license recommendations.
I'd like to say a few things about this to introduce the topic and then Scott Archer will take it from there. Shortly after I started working for In City back in April, I discovered from looking at old commission reports that there was a lot of concern among you about the business license and how we do it. And the more I explored it, the more questions I asked of our staff, the more complicated the knot became. So much so that there were four or five different levels of approval, different people doing different things, replicating work, a lot of internal things that just had kind of morphed into their own dynamic over the years. And so that, that does happen. I think staff was grappling with a set of policies that weren't working very well. And then we also had ordinances that had fallen really out of, out of touch with current times. And so we had to go deeper at our level internally and look at how to solve this problem. We've got a fairly comprehensive staff report, but essentially what I'm, what I'm proposing to you tonight is that we need, we have the solutions we need internally to make the policy changes. But those changes really won't be effective for us unless we get our commission to also change the ordinance in a couple of different places. And that's the focus of asking for your assistance on this project to implement the study and make it effective. So I will now introduce Mr. Archer and have him take it from here.
I think he did most of the work for me there, didn't he?
I'll see if you have 12 recommendations.
Twenty-four. I've done the last.
There are only a couple that the commission has to grapple with. So if you want to convince it to those, we can do that. And Scott, I think that's really what, what you probably need.
I think there are no review of all the recommendations. They're kind of interesting. Really a lot. I, I think that's, that's interesting, the internal efficiencies that are being recommended. Those are, those are great.
Well, and the bottom line is that there's a fairness issue here. And we didn't highlight that much in the, in the staff report, but there's a really big fairness issue here. Because we find that we have certain businesses, businesses that pay their license on time, every time, year after year after year. And then we have, because of a lack of enforcement at both internally and externally, we haven't collected many of those from their competitors. And I found in my career over some 20 years that whether you're talking about building code or permit fees or anything else, what people want in your economy is a level playing field among their competitors. And what we've unfortunately let happen over the years is by not enforcing this, this correctly and updating the ordinance, we've allowed some people who have good faith and goodwill who are able to stay on top of this and pay while their competitors haven't. So we're really trying to level the playing field and also there's a lot of lost revenue here that we think will be captured through the support of the council making these ordinance changes that will then allow us to enhance the services and more pay for the things that people are asking for from us. So Scott, can you highlight the changes?
Yes. Well, again, as David said, the, so there are, there actually are 24 recommendations in the, in the report. And our consultant, we are working with this on this as well as the rest of the, the staff team that was Terry Bankhead, David Wimmer, and then David Knoll and myself. It was a really good team and I think we came up with some really good solutions and ways that the majority of these 24 recommendations being based on making the process more efficient, more customer friendly and, you know, more business friendly, if you will, and just making it a better process. As David said, the, the items that require commission follow-up specifically, and you, you received kind of late, I think just today, a draft ordinance. And I apologize to that being sent to you just today. I know it's hard to review things just before meetings, but we just wanted to at least get that in front of you to begin the process of thinking about that because we, pending any other direction or discussion, I believe we're going to bring that back to you at next week's regular commission meeting. That is mostly based on, the, the majority of the changes in that are sort of just housekeeping things that, that again, as David said, kind of make the, connect the process to the ordinance and the ordinance to the process. The, the really kind of the meat of that is the fee, is the fee change. And that's recommendation 13 in, in the report, which is on page nine. It's page 14 of the PDF. It is actually page nine on the numbered pages. And so it, it, that recommendation breaks down those, those, the rate schedule. And in your draft ordinance, it's, it addresses those changes. And what we're talking about, the, the changes there are in the businesses with one to 25 persons, that's currently $75 and that will not change. The 25 to 50 will go from 100 to $150 for an annual license. The, the businesses with 51 to 100, actually that second one should say 26 to 50 because the first one is one to 25. The, the third one, the 51 to 100 individuals goes from 150 to $225. And then those with 101 or more people will not change. It's $300 annually. What we've also done in the ordinance language, the draft ordinance language is added, and it's kind of at the bottom of that section, it's 5.04.
We're on the thumbnail.
Sixth page of the draft ordinance. I'm looking at a hard copy.
You got the 110. 5.04, 5.04.
5.04, 150, computation of fees. So that reflects in the, in the draft ordinance, what I've just described to you as those proposed changes. It just, it just spells it out. But what I wanted to specifically call your attention to was at the bottom of that highlighted and underlined in, in red is, is a paragraph about the fees being annually adjusted at the, at the direction of the city manager for inflation, you know, cost of services going up and, and other such factors. So we'll, we will tie that to some type of a CPI, CPIU. And what we're asking for is, is that that would be at the discretion of the manager in the ordinance so that we don't have to come back to you and ask to change an ordinance every year to make reasonable and justifiable increases over time.
Would it be easier to have the adjustment in there? See, they'll be adjusted annually by whatever CPI rather than needing it to discretion?
I think that's the, that's the intent. I think it, it's, we need to work a little bit, we need to clean this up a little bit more. This is a, a very rough draft that we kept from our turning.
Well, as I recall, I think all of our other fees, like silver, water, everything have a cost.
Great point, Mayor. Actually, I would prefer that because I would rather be in a position to say it's established. There's a certain formula for it and it's less discretionary for me. You can see here, since 2001, you've had a 21% increase in that and each and every year we fall further behind. And so I, I don't see, do you see any harm in simply making it an automatic type of CPI?
That was actually our intent. I think it just, there was something lost in translation with back and forth with the. It was, that was the intent. So we're going to, we're going to make that change to reflect what you're talking about.
Best thing I know is the last time we did a fee increase was that we requested the Chamber of Commerce. And their request was specific to those monies with the use for economic development purposes. Is there such language in that effect here?
We're not trying, we're not changing, proposing any changes to how that money's used at this point.
So the changes we're seeing, the increases we're seeing are not intended to cover administrative costs for the most part. I mean, I'm sure there's some administrative costs to talk about, but you know, you are talking about a 50% increase for the 26 to 50 and something like probably about the same amount. a fifty percent uh, increase for the twenty-six to fifty and something like probably about the same amount for fifty-one to a hundred. That's not, it doesn't reflect change in cost administrative fees, or does it?
It's not tied to that. If you look at the averages on the far right-hand column, you'll see that with the exception of the first number, we're quite a bit under the average of.
Rather than establish.
The other means.
The understanding these monies will be mostly used for economic development purposes.
They're not proposing any changes right now. That would go to you.
I, I just want to make sure that the intent when the chamber made the recommendation to a fee increases yeah, will, will be respected now that, that it is predominantly an economic development fundraiser.
Well, it, it's, it's, I mean, in five oh four oh four oh, it's equally enumerated to purposes. But it doesn't give any, um, at least in my reading, doesn't give any um, focus or preference to economic development over administration. I mean, the language kind of.
And so I, and that's my concern.
Yeah. And we have to pay for both of that.
No, no, but I think, I think that has to be built into it because the last time, like you said, the chamber requested the fee increase for a specific purpose. And I think we need to, to have that somehow reflected in this document.
Well, let me ask you this, Commissioner, see, you have that in front of you. Based on my reading of it, it sounds broad enough to include both administration and economic development. And so I would encourage the commission to leave that.
That, I want to.
Yeah, the consultant said right here in the report though, that, 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 that the language in the charter is very different than the language in the ordinance. And so I think there is an attempt to work out that.
My, my point is the same, that these increases are intended to meet strictly administrative charges. I, 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 I think, I think we've got to be very careful.
Agrees that.
I, so I believe we've used the business license as an administrative use in the past.
Well, if somebody's administrating this program.
Yeah, but not through the license fees, I don't think.
We're, the administration costs are absorbed in our general budget. So we're gonna continue this line item to fund it just the way we have. And we're expecting increased revenues to have increased available revenues for economic development. If we're successful in calling greater number of these fees, you will see that revenue available to you in the budget process.
The one thing that I'm sure is true, because I think I've mentioned this before, first year, four years I was here, I was not aware that running a business out of my home required a business license fee. Then I found out. But the point is, I'm sure there are a lot of people that are in advocate of this situation.
I think so.
There's a.
I was gonna say that we'll probably get something in our trail news as well as on our website once this is adjusted. And that's part of the, it's interesting that you mentioned that because I experienced that when I opened my own law practice in Anchorage, Alaska many years ago, that I had to, I had a whole bunch of leaps to jump through and that was only one of them. But, but there was uh, there's a general sense in my view that applying for business licenses currently was cumbersome, awkward, uninformed. And as you said, that's part of the reason we're doing this. And, and ultimately we want approvals to be faster, easier, simpler. And we want people to be able to go online and do the entire application so that when they come in here, all they have to do is basically pick up a certificate. We fell short of actually uh, allowing the on, or recommending an online printout because we were afraid that there would be some fraud and forgery and different things that might happen with our licenses and that wouldn't, if they paid this money, we can't even give them a nice thing that they can hang on the wall in their business behind the counter where you normally pay for your goods and services. So we're gonna, they won't be coming in to get that, but the, the whole process otherwise will be online. It's just way different than how we're doing it now.
I, I would also add, I think it goes with, the question is that uh, uh, part of the recommendations are based on um, trying to improve and increase our compliance with the program. So I think that goes along with the thought that you had, Commissioner Neely's. That, and so that's part of that internal process that we'll be um, taking a look at it when we move forward in implementing these recommendations. Is that uh, making some efforts in, in how we seek compliance, you know, whether it's education through putting it in the trail news or other outlets, but also um, looking at some other avenues that we can, that we can uh, increase that compliance.
Right now, we probably couldn't, I, I can't really know if I can think of a more efficient way of doing it. So our administrative costs are gonna go down in relation to the revenue that's coming in because we just have a lot fewer approvals in the process.
I'm glad you said this is a rough draft because I was kind of concerned about four point oh, four point oh six oh. That says, the penalty for carrying on business in the city shall be. I don't think you mean that. I think you mean penalty for carrying on business without a.
Commissioner Neely, since you called that to our attention, um, I wanted to tell you that that, that, that provision is going to be stricken because um, discovered after this draft, we've already got that, the penalty for um, not complying with business licensing rules is already covered in, in other parts of our code, which was something that I just connected the dots on today. So that will actually be taken out. So your concerns about the, the wordsmithing, it's a non, non-issue. So thank you.
Anything else that you, you brought to us more?
Uh, not necessarily, unless you had specific questions. Again, the, the part that you'll, you'll be asked to take action on is this, is, are these ordinance changes? The rest of it are just internal things that we'll be doing. So if you have specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, it was partly informational and partly to make sure you're comfortable with this draft language of the ordinance changes.
Okay, so I'm working out the um, comparables to the different cities and the breakdown of how our um, fees meet up with the other cities. And so I, I'm making the assumption then that it, it's just all the cities break down on the same numbers from one to twenty-five and in terms of number of employees, is that true? Are they all on the same um, breakdown?
Good question. Uh, I, as far as I know, the, the way that the uh, the consultant did the research on that and actually surveyed a number of cities and found those that most, I think most closely matched up with the, the way that we break ours down, uh, or, or sort of found the categories where those fit. But for the most part, I think that's, that's, yes, that's.
Okay. The, and, and um, being someone that has a business license and a home base one, um, I'm looking at this. I'm curious, um, to me, there's a huge difference between um, an in-home business that has one, maybe two employees out of the house versus a business that has twenty-five employees. That's, you know, probably, I, I can't imagine too many in-house businesses having, you know, more than five employees.
You have twenty-two.
Right, exactly. But, but, but there's a huge jump between that, there's a huge jump, I think, between that and twenty-five. And so I, I, I'm asking that specifically because um, when it talks about recommendation
thirteen.
Number um, twenty-three. It says, it was also in the, the city of Westland charges an additional fee for a home occupation business. The adoption of a home occupation business fee could generate additional revenue for Oregon City. So what that's saying is an, a, a person who has an in-home business, which is maybe just themselves or two employees, is gonna pay a seventy-five dollar business license fee and an additional fee for an at-home business when a business of twenty-five employees would actually be paying less than a business with one employee. Um, and so that concerns me. And then you also don't mention any other cities charging a special fee for um, an in-home business. And you look at Westland's, you know, charge for um, between one and twenty-five, well, they only charge half as much of us as what we're doing. So they probably do have, you know, a reason to maybe add a little fee for an at-home business license because they're paying half as much as what we are. So I'm concerned by that. Um, and I don't know if that means maybe we have a breakdown between one and three employees in home or, and then something else. I don't know how.
That's a very good call and I think it's a great point. Uh, on recommendation twenty-three, it says we should consider charging a separate fee for home occupation. My recommendation to you would be that if we charge a separate fee for home occupation license, we probably wouldn't charge also a business license fee. We would charge one or the other.
Because in a way right now, if, if.
Yeah.
A lot of companies are paying the seventy-five dollars, a full seventy-five dollars, they're pretty much paying that extra fee anyway.
And we're not uh.
That's not in the ordinance.
It's, it's not in the ordinance to change that fee right now. So that's, um, some of these recommendations are things that might be a little bit further out or, you know, at least kind of, the idea was just to put all this in, in, into the, to the realm of thinking. So there's, there is no proposal to do this type of fee right now. So it's, it's just gonna stay as a, as a flat license without a, a separate home occupation business fee right now.
If you bring that forward, my recommendation's gonna be that we do one or the other, but not both.
Right. Okay, let me see if I have anything. Else. On recommendation twenty-one, where it's talking about an initial application fee, I'm assuming that's, would be for any new businesses that apply after that goes into effect, or would it take?
No.
Would it be all existing businesses?
No, not existing. And that's another one that we've decided to not implement right now. So we've kind of deferred that recommendation as well. But the, the point of that being, it would, it would be for any new business license application from that point forward that it was implemented. The point being that there's a uh, certain amount of administrative time that goes into just processing. You have to route through the different things in that first time. And so the recommendation was based on trying to recover some of that fee. But um, based on the fact that we're already gonna increase some of our fees, uh, our, our recommendation, we're gonna defer that recommendation for the time being and maybe at some point we'll pick that up and bring that back to the commission.
Um, I, last thing, I, I really think that actually the recommendation talking about the uh, two-year, two-year renewals, I think that's probably a really good idea.
We think it is too. We're gonna, we're gonna try to, we're gonna try to do that.
Okay, great.
I don't have to pay my, my.
I gotta find that one.
But there are some, some of these, some of these are, for example, that one, there are some process issues that we have to work out internally that may, may take us a little bit of time to get into place, but we are gonna be working on those.
I'm just going back to uh, Rocky's statement about the home occupation. I, I agree with him because I, I don't think that home occupation fee should be in any form greater than a regular business fee because what you're gonna have is people are not going to do it. Most of the works are done online. You're not gonna be, all my business is an online business and now you'll probably know it. And if you, if you put a higher fee there, you're just more of a strain that they're not gonna get.
And we're not gonna try to create a disincentive to.
Yeah, but fee might actually be slightly lower. Well, that's all right. Yeah. I know means slightly lower than.
Was it a refund for the higher?
Yeah. It's not even going to be on the table. It's nothing, right? It's seventy-five dollars a year. I bet I paid it.
Well, I've only got a bill, I presume I have to pay.
Okay.
No, my life doesn't pay this.
I didn't have a commissioner, I don't know if it's helping, seeing, seeing anything, I think.
I think I have a bad memory.
Okay, so uh, for the future, so Scott, you're expecting that the ordinance will be revised and come back to a work session or go directly to uh, the commission?
I think if you're comfortable with it.
You know, we would probably go directly with the commission because you, oh Scott, this particular commission has really been chewing on this for over a year. We were trying to get this uh, done so that you, you would all be educated on it and you wouldn't have to kind of go through it a second time.
Okay, great. They will look forward to seeing this again. All right, next, um, the, another draft proposal for the exclusion ordinance. So this was back to the co-pleas.
This is uh, this is an air pushers. Staff has recommended that uh, the city commission discuss the attached draft ordinance on the exclusion ordinance and uh, determine whether or not they can remove it from the regular reading. The reason behind this is that um, a few times in the past, we've had some uh, issues with uh, people coming into public buildings and uh, dissembling staff, engagement and uh, uh, behavior that caused them to be um, removed from the building. And uh, in discussing the situation with our city attorneys, they thought that we needed a little bit more teeth. In other words, that we're seeing ordinance that allowed us to um, allowed us to keep people from entering into public buildings. Um, and that's, that's the genesis of the uh, of the draft ordinance before you. And what it would basically do is that if somebody came into a public building and engages in certain type of criminal behavior, then we can issue um, an exclusion ordinance that would uh, prohibit them from coming back into that public building or any public building for that matter for a ninety days. And upon conviction of why they were arrested, that exclusion order can be extended to up to one year. There is a, a, a appellate process in there where they can appeal the exclusion order. If they do that within five days, the ninety-day exclusion order will be uh, suspended until the appeal is heard. And uh, and there's also a variance that can be issued to the uh, for the exclusion notice. Or if you come back into public buildings and engage in certain types of lawful behavior that virtually want to come to the city commission meeting or come into bigger water bill, they would be allowed to do that. However, they would be prohibited, prohibited if you have to end under other circumstances or outside the uh, variances.
Mayor, part of the reason we uh, have this before the commission here in the work session is on the advice of the city attorney. During our uh, recent trip to the lead board in cities conference, there was an incident here at city hall and I think there have been incidents also at court and at the police building where where individuals have created disturbances to such an extent that we actually had to call in law enforcement and try to take action. What our concern and the city attorney's concern is that the city of Oregon City wouldn't have some liability if we attempted to exclude people that are out and ordinance adopted by our commission. And so we had brought this forward, the sort of as a safekeeping, housekeeping measure to make sure that you have read it, reviewed it, endorsed it, posted into our codes so that uh, the police department would be empowered then to issue those orders.
So just to clarify, we have the ability to um, because I ducked in the chatter. I had a little, a little uh, oh, yeah, sorry, but I just. So we have the ability right now to kick out somebody that's misbehaving in council chambers. Yeah, but it's, it's just for the future, so they would be excluded for that ninety-day period.
In other words, sometimes you engage this type of disloyal behavior, it's repetitive.
Right.
Day after day after day. What, what this allows us to do is, is we say, we ask them to leave. And we, we can arrest them for criminal, for criminal behavior. And then at the same time, issue an exclusion order that prohibits them from coming back for ninety days. And if they're convicted of that crime and they continue to be a problem, we can request that exclusion order be extended for a year after the condition.
I think that's a good safety, good thing to measure. The only other question I had is um, talk about public buildings and I, I confess I haven't read this very carefully because it sounded like legalese, but um, it's talk about buildings, but does this also recover our public parks? This is not a place where that meter sometimes occurs. Is it current parks or is it just?
I don't believe this ordinance addresses the parks issue.
Okay, I didn't see that, okay.
I'd like to ask the chief and, and city manager, um, without going into names or specific details, um, can you go into more detail about some of the incidents is, and what specifically has happened?
Yeah, the last one that I'm familiar with um, occurred when I was in the lead board in cities and the city clerk called me on the phone and, or the city recorder called me on the phone and described an incident where a person, a man came in to the front counter out here and created a disturbance and was threatening and making, you know, some very strong gestures. And they, we ended up calling, calling the police. And at that time, I think there were only a couple of female staffers, one in finance and then one out there at the, at the desk. I'm not sure how many other incidents there have been, probably a number.
Well, we've got two at city council meetings where the police chief removed two. Two separate meetings, I don't know, way, way back. And I mean, our, our, this would guarantee, make my piece of mind better to be able to know that that this one couldn't come.
That, that, that's probably a good call for the mayor, but honestly, when we put this, this together, I was um, concerned because the police had been called. And when I got back and started looking into it, I asked the city attorney, what are some of our options here? Because I was more looking at it from an operations standpoint. I wasn't familiar with the fact that you'd encountered that in the chambers, although I've seen that in other cities where, where I've worked. I think this is a good idea because it saves us, it's more efficient because we don't then run to court, get a order, get a court order or some other kind of uh, a warrant or, or some court action that's gonna take considerably longer. I think this is a, a way. I think this is a, a way that we might be able to use this to actually prevent the necessity of going to that next step. Um, because that's really what we want. We want to be able to operate our, our facilities in a way that our staff, our staff are safe and protected. And I think you're, you're right, Mayor, when it comes to public meetings, if you have to make a decision like that, to ask the chief to remove somebody, I think legally, we have much less exposure if we have this ordinance.
Getting back to the incident here, what, do you know what the issue this, this individual was?
I don't know what the specific issue, uh, issue was with, with that individual, but he is a person where we had numerous contacts, uh, not only us, but the municipal court judge, uh, police department. I think this incident, City Hall, was trying, my knowledge, for down here, but he has been a.
About the other place?
Continuing problem. And quite honestly, we don't have that many issues of this type. I think the two-year ordinance would only be used in very rare circumstances. And I think we're all aware of needing for the public to access public buildings and the services they provide, but it, it will not happen very often.
And somewhat ironically, uh, this might help the commission to receive this question, that I got a phone call from that individual a couple of days later, and I still have it on my recorded message center, that, that threatening phone call from this person. I've not met this individual myself, and person, I would, yeah, I've seen pictures of him, but I haven't met him. He left a threatening message on my voicemail, threatened to sue the city over our lack of this very thing. Uh, we don't want to accommodate that. We'd like to just hold our lack of, of, or not having this ordinance. So, yeah. That's just the wording on the, under O two O for the civil exclusion. Um, now, before you listed eight items, you say here, uh, that the person has been arrested and either cited to appear in court for charging, or lodged in jail for presentation to a judge for charging, based upon probable cause to be that the person has committed any of the following offenses. Why are you including all that probable cause, saying, oh, the, for the person that's not innocent, and said, well, they didn't really have probable cause, and all things to the city? Why not just say, charging for one of the following offenses without having, I assume you're not going to put them in jail, put them before the judge unless you thought you had probable cause anyway? Why not leave it out of it?
You know, that is a, a good question for Mr. Cavice.
That's a good question for Mr. Cavice.
Yeah, no, quite honestly, uh, quite honestly, Jim, uh, we, we did review this with him, we discussed it with him.
Yeah.
And I think he just felt we were more legally protected, protected by, by people with more sense of the word.
But, but I'm the person that decided, and I know you have probable cause, so I'm going to sue you. But, um, Commissioner, I might, uh, they're going to need probable cause to enforce this. As a very first time, so why not, why do we have to run from that? We should be saying right up front, if they have probable cause, and that way, the complainant who might be subject to this will be able to look at the ordinance and say, well, they told me they had probable cause, I gave it, I gave them probable cause, and they put me on those by this ordinance, that that's the standard of arrest. I wouldn't want there to be some ambiguity. I don't believe I gave them probable cause. That's my opinion. And that's why I rested it in court. And, and that would be a plus to determine whether. I have a question, is turning whether you really need that wording in or not? I mean. I think it's better draft with the wording in there, because it sets the standard of arrest as opposed to, uh, we presume you're guilty, or we don't have a standard. If we take it out, is the standard a civil standard, which is a preponderance of evidence, or is it something higher? In this case, by saying probable cause, that language is consistent with the Supreme Court, uh, adjudications on arrests. And I feel like that's the safest way for us to be, but if the city attorney agrees otherwise, it will be happy to.
Okay, any more comments, questions, concerns about this? And we'll see this one at the, at subsequent meeting, adoption as well. Okay, thank you. Next, uh, it looks like the flag you also, the graffiti.
Or is, uh, this is an issue that was originally brought up, um, I believe over the summer, we had a, a lot of graffiti issues around town. And for the most part, I'd like to leave the rest of a couple individuals, it's been taken care of, but as we all know, it's probably going to reoccur in our cities in the future. And the intent of this ordinance is to give, uh, uh, again, the cities that you can require in property owners to remove graffiti in their property. And in other words, if a building, or a house, or residence is, um, has had graffiti sprayed on it, or marked on it, then this, uh, lays out the, uh, process for notifying the owners of the, um, of the, um, need to get rid of the graffiti. And I believe, uh, this one said within ten days. And, uh, with, with an appeal, the city manager is, is need can extend that for another ten days. And again, this is an issue that, um, we brought before the commission because of some previous interest, and was trying to get a feel whether or not this is something that they would want us to, uh, continue with and bring back in a more formal setting.
So this parallels graffiti ordinances in other communities as well?
Yes.
Any questions about this?
Do, do we have a graffiti ordinance now?
No.
Okay. I've got, I do have a question, um, and that is, um, both the, a, no person may possess, we're on page two, I think.
Page two?
Yeah, page two.
Graffiti notices?
No, no person may possess a graffiti implement with the intent to create graffiti. Do you have a, a definition of what intent is? I mean, that's, that's a little hard to get my hands around. I mean, the guy has the markers, and you see him approaching something, but you tend to do something, he takes out a sketch pad, and he's going to actually draw a sketch pad with his, with his weight hands.
I think the intent of that wording is, is if you, uh, have somebody in the vicinity with a can of spray paint, or hand of fresh green spray paint on the, uh, on the building, there's green spray paint on his fingers, and there's a green spray paint canvas in the pocket, then there, there you.
The implication there, it's a future intent, it's not something they already did. The intent to create graffiti, not that they probably did create graffiti.
But, but I guess we're, we're splitting hairs a little bit here, but obviously, when, when one item of graffiti is done, it is, it is quite probable for them to go on to go and be really, really tired.
I have a question as to whether this ordinance would apply to, um, box cars on railroads that have been, on, on a railroad site.
I don't think those are city property. My understanding is that, that is, that is not city, that is a, a, a right of way through the city.
A temporary structure.
So this, this would only be applicable to city-owned properties?
Oh, no, no, property is. I, I guess my, my, yeah, I'm not sure that's a real property, but I think that, uh, that those, uh, that it's a railroad property, therefore, I don't believe you can enforce laws on railroad property because they have their own railroad police.
I think, honestly, I think that's something we'd have to look at. Obviously, if it's a moving vehicle through the city, then it's a vehicle, it's a motor vehicle, and it's not going to be subject to that. But if it's a stationary boxcar, depending on how long it's parked, it's a good legal question to ask. Something probably we should, um, what I like about these work sessions is, when you folks think of these questions here, we can try to answer them before the next meeting, and that's one that we can answer. Also, if you have others that occur to you, that you think are substantive enough to make or break your support for this, or to help the city enforce it later, please submit those to your mayor or the chief, and we'll make sure that they get resolved beforehand, because sometimes it's hard, uh, it's always difficult at a council meeting the night you're going to adopt it, to get the question there, or to answer it. So we'll put that in the next, before we ask the city attorney that. No question.
Other questions? Great. We'll see that one again, too. So thank you very much for bringing that forward. We'll have to see it. So that completes our discussion agenda, except for the commission retreat agenda. Mind if I yawn during some?
Okay. I might actually say something, Mayor. Um, first of all, before we get into my report, I want to, I want to get back to the commission about, uh, the adoption of the, uh, business license recommendations. What, because, because, Madam Mayor, you said something about good luck to you folks next, next time, or next year, or something, that they would be dealing with. What we're hoping to do is bring it back for adoption on December fifteenth, meaning that you would have your first and second reading.
I never.
Charter, so you'd have your first and second, second reading right there at that same meeting by title only. Now, that requires everyone to be unanimous, so if there's an objection, you'd have to hold it over.
For which one is it?
Um, for December fifteenth.
It's an emergency.
So we were contemplating you having your first and second reading both on the fifteenth, so you could adopt it that night. Um, so that's what we're going to do unless you tell us which one. I presume it doesn't apply until some year. Oh, yeah. It'll apply to the future. Not, it won't be retroactive, I don't think. I mean, it's not retroactive to two thousand eleven, because I've already gone, I built. So two thousand twelve. Two thousand twelve. It's not changing anyway. I, I'm just, I'm just not sure why we'd want us to do the first and second reading.
It's a way to pay it, January.
Well, my preference is the council, the commission that had to deal with this at the work session and initiated the work, I would think it would be more efficient to have you vote on the final adoption. But if you wanted to go to, to another month, you could do that. I would do that. I mean, I don't see, if we got something that isn't, something to be implemented right away, I don't know, I wouldn't want to do that. So you're okay going to January for the final? Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, I, I could agree. I mean, if, if, if it's a state university accepted by all elected leaders, you know, it's not going to be very effective, so.
Okay, no problem. So, uh, and I want to thank, uh, Scott and Terry and David Wimmer and David Knoll, our IQ director, for the work they did on that task force. It was a very difficult job, especially when you looked at the history here, and couldn't have done it without their help. Um, the next thing I want to let the commission know is that the, uh, employee suggestion program that I mentioned to you a couple of meetings ago, we have now got that in place. Uh, I have to thank Jim Lefler for his work on that, and also our department heads. What I'm excited about is to see what sort of ideas this generates for us, just in time for us to begin our budget work after the first year. Um, and so I'm hopeful that we may get some good ideas from some of our frontline employees about how we can save money for the city through that program. Um, so what's on the agenda tonight under my record is your, uh, planning for the retreat. And my, my main point here is I want to make sure that, uh, we get commission input from each of you about, um, what's on the agenda for the retreat. Now, as you, as I described earlier, the first, uh, eight hours or so are going to be training with the gladiators, and then after that, we have a four or five hour block of time for the, um, actual goals, goal-setting portion. Um, I believe it was Commissioner Seda that had a concern that we might run out of time, and we recognize that that's a valid concern, and that we might. So I want you to know upfront that what we're trying to do is make sure that whatever we don't get discussed in that, in that retreat setting that day, we will bring forward it at the earliest possible work session to finish the discussion. So don't feel constrained by, by that. However, you see on the back page, we have your top three priorities. Um, we aren't, aren't suggesting that every one of you has your three different priorities. And so if you've talked among yourselves enough to be comfortable with sharing priorities or whatever, that's fine. We just sort of want to know if there's a consensus there, and we also want to make sure that the staff, that we don't, um, sort of steer the agenda and manipulate what that time's going to be spent on. We want that to be spent on things that our commission feels are priorities. Also, it's important for me to mention that our commission, our likes, um, both Roth and Betty Mon, have also been given this, and we're seeking their input as well.
So if the goals are objectives, though, I mean, a goal is very different in my mind. A goal is broad, so a priority for a goal, for me, would be very different than an objective, which would be a very specific thing, like build a new.
Right. So what we're looking at, we listed in the staff report here the goals that you currently have. We aren't envisioning or suggesting to you that you necessarily change those goals. They seem very valid, they still seem relevant. So what, what this is, Mayor, is that we're trying to make sure that we get topics.
They're not objectives. So you want objectives under each one, or, because I think the goals can change. The goals reflect their inherent importance and emphasis that the community wants.
The point, the point I'm trying to get to is to solicit feedback from all of our local officials about what they want to discuss during goal-setting at the retreat. So if there's anything, it doesn't necessarily have to be under one of these. Any item that you think you want to discuss at the retreat, we would like to know about that in advance so we can prepare. Okay.
That means that it's not considered a goal or an objective?
And even if it doesn't fit under the current goal, I mean, the commission can change its goals. Um, so we don't care if it's a goal, objective, or just a topic or discussion. We're open to all those.
Can I put mine out there? This living pool isn't under critical facility needs, nor is the police station, which is, should, I think should be.
Oh, I would argue that it's under enhanced visibility of our community.
Yeah, it should be critical facility.
Or I should.
I guess, uh, so I would add that.
You gotta be careful when you talk about critical facility. Well, and, and keep in mind, what we're thinking about is critical facility needs for this coming twelve-month period. And I don't think any of you are contemplating us, um, building a police facility in the next twelve months. We'd like to, but.
But we may wish to do a planning this year.
Absolutely.
So I think, so I think that that, um, you know, really is a discussion, certainly a special point.
So you can feel free to add those, and don't, and we're going to put three boxes on there, because, you know, we do have a limited amount of time to address these things, but if you have more than that, and you want to share those.
I don't have a chance to do it. The New Creek Canyon IDA is way up to the county, treat city USA, tiered water rates, performance rate goals, and creating jobs.
Send me your email.
Yeah, okay. So now, you've now heard me. And charter reviews, newer issues, present for art program, and a leadership press.
You know that all did it here? Are you using?
Those are the things that you talked about in the past, that I think are going to be critical, um, issues that you, you will have to address, so there are priorities and not that, they're going to be, someone will become a hazard.
And, and, uh, every one of those probably is definitely important, as all, all, the ones we've listed also from the staff level probably are also important. The reality is that we won't be able to address all of them, but, and that's the hard part. I mean, we have to come out of that retreat with a, a list that we can achieve, and I'm hoping, uh, through working with you folks on this, that when we're, when we finally come out of that retreat, and we produce that goals report, that goals document, that we don't end up with a document that's, uh, quite as much of a wish list that is unattainable. A lot of the things we have in our current document, they're good things, but there's things in there that we simply couldn't afford, and I think we probably knew when we put those on there.
Well, they never got prioritized, but. I think, I think the value, though, of, of putting all the apples in the basket, is then you can pick out the five prime ones that you want to investigate. You're not going to, you can't do everything, but, but I think it's, uh, goals are not effective when they don't start with all the apples in the barrel.
Oh, I agree with that.
I think it's easier when you have them all, when you cut into the session, to be able to say, I like A, D, and Q, and then, and then you come together on the priorities.
I, I agree with that, except I have to, I think I'm not explaining myself well, because at the end, after you've considered all those possibilities, what, what we do with that document, which were priorities, is I have to go back and create a budget to hit those things. So if it's a wish list that contains a comprehensive list of things that you're describing, which is very thought-provoking, but ultimately, we need to boil it down to.
That's why I just said, A, D, and Q. I mean, but, but I think you can really start the discussion to have all the apples on the table, um, because that's, that's when, um, you find that you're not competent.
There are certainly things in our existing document, for example, that we, we couldn't budget for. There wasn't money there, so I'm hoping this year that we'll be able to get that down to a list that we know we can budget for, so that we have a more realistic chance of achieving.
Yeah, but fewer number makes such, such sense, if I'm thinking.
That's why we didn't put ten blanks on the page.
Well, I think you need to have, I, that's where, that's where we disagree. I think that all issues important to each person here need to be listed.
Feel free to do so.
When you come together, then.
No, you shouldn't feel free.
No, I, I guess, that's why I'm talking tonight, so you don't get to me talking together. You don't have to hear me talk. But I, but I believe that, 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 that when you come together, then that's when you choose the top five out of the thirty-six you've got.
I think one of the, one of the things that I personally had a little trouble with goals and objectives, and I understand they're different, but to look at the concerns and the individual members of the commission have, and see if the objectives fall within the goals that you're listing. And I suspect we're going to see some pattern of similarities around some of these shit, and I'm really hopeful that those patterns will show up in the priorities, and we'll kind of have our top ten list, if you will, when we get out of there. So thank you for those comments, Mayor.
Got it? Okay.
Yeah, uh, two, two, two points I'd like to make. One, um, the way you're describing it, um, Janet, is that you're looking to do, you're looking for us to establish goals and objectives for the next round of year that are, you that are, you know, economically realistic and can be accomplished within a year's time. But what I'm wondering and concerned about is how do you plan or how do we envision collectively those things that are larger visions that are like two or five or 50 or, you know.
I need to explain that. That's a great question. When I say achievable in a year, I mean for us to start working on them that year. Because if, for example, you're going to do comprehensive plan, there are, are sound planning processes, depending on the size of the scope and project, it could take two or three years. And we've discussed some of those could take over a year pretty easily. So don't feel constrained that the whole thing has to be completed in a year. One example that we've put on the list from meetings that we've had with you already is the Co-Habitat Task Force. I, I'd be surprised actually if we could accomplish that entire thing, start to finish in a year. I meant, I, I mean to say, it can be done in that year, that means we can start it that year. So it could take a lot longer.
The other thing I wanted to raise, I don't need any, you know, consensus or, or, I just want to put the bug in the ears of my colleagues. And it's kind of, it's something that I found valuable when we had our recruitment for the city manager, which was we broadened the process out beyond the commission and, you know, a lot of other constituencies were brought into, into the process, such as the unions and the C I T, et cetera. And what I'm, what I'm hoping that my colleagues will be interested in, and I'd like them to think about it over the next couple of weeks, is, is having that same kind of broadened participation for the retreat. At least at a minimum, the two unions and the C I T having their representative with a place at the table during the retreat to get their direct input. Because I think they have valuable insights and, and wisdom and information to provide us to help us.
Would I be asked to clarify that, that you may have the goal setting portion because the training that you're going to be doing with the Glazers, we, we planned that for a very limited number of participants, that being our city commissioners and senior departmentists. So I'm assuming that by that you might have meant the goal setting portion.
I have a thought on the laser project because I'm still, I have to confess that I really don't know what that's going to involve.
They'll be, for example, I'll give you an example. They'll be interviewing each of you, asking you questions about what you think is working and isn't working. They'll be asking you questions about communication, how effective it's been in the past, how effective it is between each of you and with each of you and the staff. And so that's probably not something that some of the other stakeholders you mentioned would necessarily need to be involved in that. It's, it's trying to facilitate how you work.
Be honest, David, from what you just described it as, I think it would be an excellent.
I didn't realize the scope could be that big because they do prepare in advance the amount of hours they spend on the interviews and the materials we produce. I certainly could have made a big, a bigger thing like that, but it would have been quite a bit more expensive. So I tailored it around your available resources, not, not being aware.
I look at that activity as something to facilitate us in our discussions as opposed to actually setting up our goals. I mean, yeah, we might talk about what makes it important and so forth, but.
I, I, I'd just like to encourage, let's keep an open mind about what the Glazers are going to do with us. And I'll bet you that there'll be something that comes out of that that we can use with those stakeholder groups that helps us communicate with them more effectively and perhaps vice versa. And then next year, if we want to broaden that to, to, I'll try to get that understanding sooner so that we can plan to have a bigger group.
Having been through three different commission transitions, I think the importance of the retreat to keep it focused on the city commission is team building. You've got new, new people to both figure out working styles, working processes and procedures, setting the goals together. I mean, it's really a lot about new communication. And I think to complicate it the first, the first time, and we had, I don't know, I guess there were, never was time, we didn't have transition, that I just would urge you to keep it to that maybe for the first time. You have an opportunity till the 29th to be gathering that information. Here is to.
And even after that, you know, I mean, we're really a continuous improvement organization. So let's say we go through our goal setting, our planning, and we, we've had things, I think since I've been here that have come up that weren't necessarily in the goals, but by gosh, they turned out to be really important to all of us and there was a sense of urgency if we need to react to that. And we, so I like to think that we're fluid enough, if it doesn't get in there, the key for us is getting it in there means that I can try to budget for it. And as you both know, if you don't budget for it, sometimes it's hard to guarantee a result. So that's, that's what it, the main benefit is.
You said, and when you came on, it's also transition, so you've been in four transitions.
Okay, we want to be a second question. Okay, any more discussion on that? Maybe adding anything for the golden order?
We did get our Piddlesome report back on South End Road, so we thought this would be the time instead of waiting another day. And I was prompted by this because I was watching the news last night where I saw a house, a car went through a house in Portland. And I don't know how many of you saw that, but I thought that's a good timely indicator. We should talk about this tonight.
Yeah, so I think in the last city commission meeting, you asked about the report and I just received the draft. And now we've, I've reviewed it and we've, Piddlesum has finalized it. And they've come up with a recommendation which they think are good ones. They're illustrated in the drawing that I passed around. What you'll see is both be having Chevron curb signs for both locations. And we'll be re-stripping the roadway through Gentry Way, using dash striping through there to more clearly delineate that the, just because we've got this big intersection, you'll still be able to clearly see the striping. We'll also be creating a wider median in that area to just keep the, keep the automobiles more in line with the lane itself. And then we're also going to be adding two new streetlights. And let's see if there's anything else. That's essentially it. And we'll be, we, we just is pretty much hot off the press, but we will be implementing this immediately. Some of this doesn't take a little while, like the striping, we can't do immediately, it's weather dependent. But as soon as we can achieve all of these recommendations, they will be completed.
Questions about that?
Nancy, you're getting on that so quickly because I think it was only about a month ago, a little less than that, but that individuals here and brought our attention. So I appreciate your speed on this one.
I have a couple of questions actually about this. Is there a stop sign for South End at Gentry?
No. Oh, on Gentry?
When you're traveling, for example.
There would be stops on Gentry.
So the people who are on Gentry coming to South End have stop signs to over there. But it's not a four-way stop. The people who are on South End basically keep flowing through. Has there been considering, consideration of establishing stop signs on South End at Gentry? Because the people who hit this, you know, intersection, they have been causing the problem. I mean, they've generally been driving under the influence. But I think even people who are driving under the influence, generally, more often than not, when they see a stop sign, will in fact stop at the stop sign, even if they're drunk. And I'm just wondering how, how much, you know, a cheap solution to this whole problem would just be establishing stop, stop signs on South End at Gentry.
What are the indications of those streets? I presume South End is a minor area.
That's right. Local street.
Local street.
Yeah, this, you would, in order, there are specific guidelines for installing stop, different configurations of stop control intersections, commissioner, and C I T. And there are specific warrants that you need to meet in order to put in a four-way stop. This location would not be recommended based on the existing conditions for a four-way stop. Four-way stops actually cause more congestion. And to stop all the traffic on South End Road for no particular reason to get off of Gentry Way, there's really very little delay on Gentry Way to get off. So the stop signs are really not intended to be speed control or to control traffic behavior. It really is to mitigate congestion and to allow for better flow of traffic. So this would not be a location where these conditions, that were warranted, a stop sign, a forward stop sign.
Further discussion? Thank you, Nancy. I just have one brief thing. As you know, the law of follows, our judiciary position is we're meeting the January 15 bridge closure event. And do I, are there any exceptions to me writing a letter of support in behalf of the city for a grant to the practice of the choice and development council, who's funded? Okay, sure. Okay, good. Anything else? We are here.